Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four meeting in the North Beach Planning Commission. We have six items on the agenda this evening as well as minutes we need to approve from our January twenty fifth meeting. So unless there's.
Is that the full agenda?
Okay, so everything's up. So maybe as a first order of business, if we could ask the commission if they have any comments on the minutes from the January twenty fifth meeting? Or if that looks good to approve.
My only comment on that is that. We didn't resolve the the dates. On the post have five meetings before I thought it was. Where is it stated here? Five or seven meetings set up prior to the comprehensive plan. By July, we haven't looked into that.
Okay, so. My suggestion, considering we have a packed house tonight, maybe we put this at the end of the meeting. So not keeping people waiting any longer than they need to wait, but I agree those those who need to be set up, so. Why the next meeting, town should have five meetings set up. Okay. Anything else on here that looks? I just want to do, we need to amend this or do anything, or can we just? Yeah, it's just a note, I think, okay, so, yeah, I think we can approve as as written, would anyone like to make a motion to approve as written?
I believe that we approved.
Second, as written, second, all in favor? Hi. There we go. Fantastic.
From it's a order request to. This since it's so long, if we do some of the ones that may not have as many questions.
Yeah, so this is your suggested order?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're in agreement. From what I like that. So. We're gonna try to, we're gonna try to do the easy ones first this evening, get people out of here as as quickly as possible. So the first one, we have a business application for ninety one twenty Chesapeake Avenue Lotus Massage. If we. Do we get the skinny on that?
So the only requirements were proof of state licensing, board documents, and then the town business application. The applicant had applied previously but was waiting on the license from Maryland to come in. That has been provided. And her business license application has been accepted at the town, so. And the location that she's going is fully commercial.
Okay. So just a quick question. Yeah, so a quick question, I if the reason it's coming before us, I mean, has. Even though the condition's been met, we, yeah. Okay, it's not fully, but okay. Okay.
You ask a question about the conditional use L two says massage is incidental to a principal. Medical or spa use, whereas they're listing it as their principal use. Does that require a special exception?
It is under the more of under. So two.
Personal services help.
Services health.
Which is a conditional use in the CM zone.
Can I get my paper back? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
On the front page. Would be the. Seventeen three.
Why isn't it? Hell.
Massage therapy. Good to hear incidental to medical or spa use. There should have been removed when they did the.
Health service.
The personal services are three different.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we add the three different personal services.
Is anything else that should have been captured under that? I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, if you look at the use table. Massage was taken out of the use table and was replaced with the three personal services grooming wellness and health.
Well, couldn't that be classified under wellness? And actually under health as well.
I mean, so what we had decided at the time was wellness. Didn't necessarily require specific state licensing. And anything that would require state licensing by. The health department or any of those other services would have to fall in under the health. So because she's a licensed massage therapist, it fell under health.
Okay. And that's one of the three categories.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm of the mind that that captures. Those subheadings that should be removed. So.
Yeah, and I put a note on that to have it. Texting them. Yeah. Okay.
I think we can just make that clear, I mean, whoever for approval, whoever makes that. Whoever makes a motion, I think it's good to just say that we are approving this based on the fact that we feel it. It falls under personal health services and. You know, we're reviewing it as that. Just to in case there's any. Approving, sorry. We're reviewing and then approving based based on.
Don't worry, I'll keep you in line.
Thank you, thanks. Yeah, I mean, unless there's any other questions. Appears pretty straightforward to me, but if anybody has any questions, please.
Well, I think it was the. The licensing, so. Improved use with conditions. Maybe it has parking, so.
Yes, that she had been moving to renew her license. This is they do it on a two year basis. So it goes, the current license goes until October. Thirty first and the board sends out notices in August for them to reapply.
Do we do that function as a town, do we in terms of reviewing?
I don't think we police that, that would have to be the health department to. Licensing.
Somebody would. It's just that because the current license, because she got it in the middle of the two year term. It expires fairly quickly, so we want to make sure that that license gets renewed.
Okay.
But I'm not sure we do that as a town, do we? I mean, do we follow up on an annual basis? We don't. Okay.
Believe me, they'll come after her if she's operating her him, is it a woman that's doing this massage? Hi. Okay, um, no, they'll come after her quickly if if she's operating without a license.
What can I hope? Obviously, you're going to do what you need to do.
This is in her first location.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the. What is it, the name of it, the?
Lotus.
Lotus massage.
The subject to proof of licensing.
Subject to proof of licensing. Anything else? It's attached, so so she's already met the, she's already met that.
That's the state license.
Okay.
And the reason we did it under health is because it's the license is issued by the Department of Health.
Make a second for that? All in favor? Hi. Thank you for choosing a town in North Beach to do business, we really appreciate it, yeah, and we wish you all success. Great.
I'll tell you, it takes more to get a license to be to do this than to be a real estate agent, serious.
Thanks again.
Next one?
You've got the numbers there, CD. Eighty nine twelve Bay Avenue.
I might be online.
Hey, Rick Crump, this is Mike Murphy, my wife and I are online, yes.
Yeah. We're doing trying to do the ones that are a little.
Wasn't this the one with the issue with the height issue?
Yeah, it was, right, yeah. So you can see the hash document shows the.
Squeaked under.
Yeah, the building is now under forty feet. And they did receive their approval from the Board of Appeals for the setbacks that they asked for. And so now it's coming back to you to show that the forty foot building height has been amended. A year too.
What's the lot size again? What's the lot dimensions?
It's thirty nine, nine and three quarters.
Thirty nine square?
Did the lot?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the height.
Lot fifty one, yeah. And the width is forty.
Yeah, so we got the. They got, they went to B O N.
Yeah, to get it. What was our, what was our recommendation of the Board of Appeals? We usually make a recommendation on those, don't we?
Oh, yeah, they they agreed with your recommendations, so the setbacks are.
Reduced on the side. So we took exception to height, so now they were back in.
Okay.
The demonstrate height.
And so you what, you've got five feet on each side presumably, something like that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, what was decided on the parking?
Good question.
Because if there's gonna be three. Residences.
Four stories, just from one story to four stories.
Yeah, they do have the parking in the rear and the garage is still there. Now they can.
In the garage?
As a, as a two story garage on the property.
When we're on. Murphy. Okay.
This is the one that has two lots, one commercial, one not.
Okay.
We did control with the attorneys, there is not an issue with them. Replanting the property as to one lot. They have not submitted that at this time. Just because they would have to do the replating paper work and and the surveying work, but it is. There is no issue with approving that based on the attorney's recommendation.
And their off street parking is off the Chesapeake rally?
Yeah. And it and it's it's actually not an alley, it actually is their deed of property as opposed to. The alleys we normally deal with.
And they're keeping, are they keeping the footprint for the garage, is existing?
This thing.
Yeah.
Well, that that was, that was our concern was the height.
Yeah.
They meet the height.
So if Board of Appeals has approved, and I'm a little confused what we're doing tonight.
Because they had not adjusted the height at that time.
Oh, that's right, the height issue, sorry, okay.
The Board of Appeals granted the. Requested side setbacks on the condition that they come back here and be approved.
Okay.
Under forty feet.
All right. And it looks like they've done that.
They're at forty exactly.
Thirty nine, nine and a quarter. This is just a straight. Proven submitted.
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy, just a quick question unrelated to our approval tonight, just what's your intended use for the for the property?
The property would be a primary residence.
Okay, good, happy to hear that. Would anyone like to make a motion? Or any questions?
Questions. Make a motion to approve the resubmitted. Permit for eighty nine twelve Bay Avenue. With the restrictions from the Board of Appeals.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. You're good to go, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Four eleven forty one twelve Chestnut. Forty one. Is anybody here? On forty one twelve. We're not changing the footprint, right?
They're just going up.
Yeah. On the right corner, there's a light. That they square off where the. Yeah, that little section there. That's that'll be, that'll go over. Yep. That's the only expanding.
Well, no, this is an addition to the front.
And then how does that affect the ratio previous and in purpose?
This is mostly concrete. They're really not adding much to the.
They don't sound like they have any. It's either all concrete or or else three feet, three feet. They're back. Three feet.
Yeah, this is interesting, so that's previous, it's mostly concrete on this. I don't know what this is.
Gonna be that front. I'm giving up on my.
Who's who's here to ask questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Is any?
All right, can you just run us through the the sticky bits?
Basically, they are applying to add a two story addition above the home.
I guess my question was. It's inferred, but I don't have. So. Are you gonna strip the existing structure and use the old foundation, or are we coming in?
They are using the existing foundation.
Okay, so. Okay, that's not our purview to to look at that total design, but then essentially he's gonna. He's got some, he's got some interior footers, right, that he's gonna put in?
They do.
Okay.
Biggest issue among others, this is.
The roof pitch has been changed. The and that's the hard topic, the news right there. Floor has been lowered to a standard eight and a half, which can bring it down to. Thirty nine and a half.
Are they measuring from the top of the foundation wall or from top of grade? As they weren't necessarily going from grade or as the requirements are from grade.
Well, they said they were going from the top of the footing and I told them they need to adjust it, so once they adjust from the top of the footing and change the pitch of the roof. It brings it down.
Could have a drawing?
Has the hard drawings, there's we don't, we weren't able to give the figures that come through.
So it said they were taking it from, their dimension was from.
The top.
It was another six inches below that to grade.
Right.
And then so they take that third floor and make it eight foot instead of nine, one, and then change to the. Roof pitch to eighteen twelve. So they just penciled it in, they didn't actually make change on it. That's gotta be now.
It's a twenty five.
Yeah. A lot of work.
And they also realize that once they get into it, if the if the county decides that the. The additional furniture choice and and interior footers are not enough, that they'll have to come back and start over in the brand new build.
See, yeah.
Is Jerome's question on the last one, do we know whether this is gonna be a? We are MEO or.
Oh, why you question?
There's nothing we can do with it. We can't deny it just because that's what we're gonna do.
No.
Because it's still residential, not commercial?
You can have the RBO wins.
We can, we don't have any restrictions on that.
Not because nobody here and.
We can't ask questions.
To the end, if nobody shows up, we'll put it on next month.
We can.
We can boil. Down a few questions to throw on this one, so that when you. They come back, we can have a few things answered.
Yeah, there's two numbers on the journey from it.
Oh, it's that one.
Been reworked.
That's such a cute.
As a resident, they have to have parking.
Renewal, yeah.
Super cute.
Yeah.
That's that's that street.
It was, remember? Somehow they went and got it rescinded, and then it sold, it sold once or twice since. Potentially since then.
Four bedroom.
Yeah, they're more than likely.
Cause I mean, that.
Live there now? They just bought it.
I mean, it's really not our purview again, but still, that seems like.
Also have a problem with the the front setback that you have shown on here. They show a three foot.
No, that's the sign.
No, no, the front.
They're showing us three.
Yeah.
It should be ten. But I don't know what this is. Highlight area here with this outline, I don't know what that's.
It's it's an addition.
This is the addition. And it's.
Redone. And move on twice. Yeah, while we, yeah, I'd be curious on you two, cause this is a commercial. But this is being proposed as residential, is that right? Must be.
We don't know.
Don't know.
Next.
Yeah, why don't we? You know, I too.
Okay, we got.
I don't feel it's our responsibility to.
Next one is please the charity.
I know this is brand new, the first you all have ever heard of this. But they are.
And they have no representation here at all.
No one here at all for them. Yeah. They are ready to move forward, I think the biggest. Piece of this is Cowper County has already approved the stormwater management for the site. And everything else is there for you to see, I think. The only thing we need to do is ensure that we make the text amendment. I think if you remember, we talked about. Clerical error when we redid chapter three. That the approval for this was removed and we all voted that.
That was a mistake. Right.
It was just a clerical error, so we still need to straighten that out, but I can. I can put together that package to send to the council for. To have to have redone. Other than that, everything is in order. I have any comments or questions?
Comments, questions?
And there is a letter of support in here as well.
How long do you think it's gonna take for the build? Does anybody have any idea?
The lease has been approved just this past week. So we have a final lease, I'm told, I haven't seen it in writing, but. The archdiocese has given a twenty five year lease on the property. To be used solely as a pantry. With auxiliary. Will be other auxiliary things that the lady charity does. To your question. It depends on how long permits through the county. Take to get. We have not let bids yet on that. So. Thanks to to the town. We believe that there are sufficient funds in place to. To do it, so how long is it going to take to build? Probably once they start building. Our hope is to pour the. Pour the pad before November.
Okay.
Otherwise, we cannot let the concrete pad. We may have to wait until spring.
Need setbacks and everything.
So there is a letter of support here, but one of the concerns and a lot of the support was. Making sure that it keeps with the character of the surrounding residential houses, so. I don't know if people had seen the final architecturals, but there's a picture up there, it's. It's a very residential looking building as opposed to. You know, a large structure that was more warehouse style. So it'll fit in with the the skyline of the of the street nicely.
The existing building is coming down.
Correct.
Is this gonna allow for parking? Is this gonna allow for parking? I don't think they have.
stays exactly the same. The parking lot will not change.
Yeah, there's good parking. And that's from Dayton, right? This this always. That looks nice.
Plenty of windows, no blind walls.
No ramp. Pick it up.
Any comments or questions?
Do you think the lady in the back from public comment for this one, she would just like to?
Sure. Sure, if there's if there's no questions or comments um from the commission, we could open it to public comment. Okay, please.
My name is Rochelle Day and I live at eighty eight eighteen Dayton Avenue here in North Beach. I am a neighbor of, is this on?
We can hear you. Yeah, I can. We can all hear you up here.
My fellow support work at this. That they do in the community to feed the hungry. I am even a member to ladies of auxiliary of charity here in um. North Beach. They do wonderful work. Um however, I am concerned for the residential character of the neighborhood. I live on this street and I I have me across from. There are times when the food pantry operation. Does cause congestion in some of the driveways. Are blocked. Of course, people and some wanna remain, you know, online. They don't want somebody. Oh, that's an assumption. I shouldn't have brought it up. Sorry. And um so what I would ask for this board. Is for the board to require the ladies of charity of Calva County. To migrate the impact of our neighborhood by developing congestion reduction strategies. To lessen the impact on the neighborhood. I'm not on the side. I'm on the other side of the street. So I don't get the driveway blocked and things like that, but I know the neighbors on the other side. Have had problems getting out of their driveway. I also. And we keep the residential character of the neighborhood intact. By requiring the ladies of charity, Calva County, to operate from a house. Not from what appears to be a warehouse. Both inside and outside. That outside is beautiful. But the inside to me is more of a warehouse. Than a house, residential house. As far as I know, the property is zoned for residential. Not commercial. I thank you for listening to me.
No, we have it in the pot. Yeah, the one you sent out there will do.
Thank you for your comments.
And it's a good point. Um maybe some traffic.
What is it? Is it is it one way in or one way out?
And if you want to talk about the traffic, well, the way the problems behind or trying.
Hi, my name's Dan Kelch and with Council all all yeah, Coniston Barrett and Associates. Yeah, so I think they've, over the years, they've come up with, you know, a decent strategy for bringing what happens to be a peak. Um time abuse. Um I I know they've brought the ramps, as you said, down to the streets so that they can wheel the the food out and all. She's, you know, correct that the cars will be lined up, you know, along one side of the street. One of the members of the ladies of charity may be able to speak to what they can do there in terms of having, you know, a parking. A traffic person out there just trying to keep some space away from the driveways. I hadn't heard the comment, you know, before this evening, so I don't really have anything else to speak to about that.
Maybe feel feel free if someone would like to comment and nothing you're, we can have a discussion without any commitments being made or, yeah, so.
Maybe if you could have somebody characterize what happens on a busy day. It's like, give me an idea of what. You know, is it is it all condensed in an hour or is it spread over four hours? Ten cars or twenty, I mean, just give us an idea of of of, I know, and then you're, it's probably gonna be, it goes up and down. I just don't know. So give us an idea what you see.
The pantry operating hours um advertised are from twelve to two. Our busiest time is on Tuesdays from twelve to two. We have other openings, but the impact is much less on a Wednesday evening or a Saturday morning. Um the exception being when we have our major holiday distributions, which happened this past Saturday. That's the extreme in terms of congestion. And at that point, that's a three hour basically time block of time. Traffic will back up. To uh has backed as far as Neptune's. We weren't as far that um back that far. This past Saturday, um but the cars move. Uh it takes us probably five minutes tops to load a car. Um with a load of groceries. So they're moving constantly. We do on those major distribution days. We do have somebody who's maintaining or monitoring the traffic. Um we haven't, in all honesty, paid that much attention to driveways. Um I do make a point of going around to the neighborhood before those big distributions and letting all the residents know, either verbally or by note. Um that the distribution is occurring the next day. As far as a regular Tuesday distribution, again, cars are moving. Um clients do not get out of their cars. So uh we approach the car, get an order, they move a little bit and we fill the order and they're gone.
I'm familiar with your operation. There's cars just pull up in front of the building on Dayton. They stop, they don't get out. You bring food to them, they go on, the next one pulls up. No one pulls onto the property.
That's correct.
If you stretch the hours, you're saying right now it's twelve to two. If you stretch the hours, just throwing this out there, ten to two, would it lessen? Or would you just get that many more cars? What do you think would happen?
Honestly, um we start serving on a Tuesday, because again, that's our big day. We're serving probably on average right now eighty client, eighty families. We tell them twelve to two, we start serving at ten thirty.
Okay.
So.
But you do, you do inform the the neighborhood which days?
The heavy distribution days, I do. Yes, regular distribution days, no, but there those those hours are unchanged.
Would it be possible to reach out to the clients and just say, hey, please don't block a driveway while you're waiting in line?
We have tried that, but in all honesty, I suspect if we have to mark. All the driveways along that side of the road, we would have to station somebody there because clients aren't gonna remember.
I'm gonna do the uh. For what which days again? I'm sorry, man.
Tuesday is the heavy day.
Okay, okay. So for whatever reason, I didn't go to work for the morning and I wanted to get out of my driveway. Who do I call? Because the queue is there, I need to get, I need to drive out. Do I, do you have somebody I can talk to to hold the line for a little bit so I can drive out?
We certainly have a phone and yes, you could call in and somebody could answer the phone, but you could also probably flag somebody on the street.
Okay.
Because we're all outside.
All right, I guess that's what I was asking. You know, is there somebody I can say, hey, could you hold that line so I can head on?
Maybe one idea, what you said is. Either visit it, each of the neighbors or put a mailing out there, hand it something to each of the neighbors and it gave them the phone number that they could call. If a situation occurs, it sounds like it doesn't occur a lot because the cars are moving. So in theory, every five minutes, you're you're gonna have the opportunity that you can get out of your drive.
What's just, what what's the lot on the south side of the property? There's a, there's a like a pathway and a, I'm sorry. Thank you for your, thank you for your comments, yeah. Um we're just, I'm here looking at the the overhead of the property. Uh I was just curious, what was on the south side of the property? There's a long driveway and a. Outbuilding or is that a house?
That wraps around and into the uh parking lot. There's a shed out back there.
Is there a way to maybe put, I don't know, like a driveway through that could show?
It it's the uh caretakers um.
Yeah.
Building back there uh for St. Anthony's um and so there's a ground driveway that runs from Dayton back.
We're just curious if that could be used as some type of access.
Around the, like around the, they go in one way, they come out the other, maybe move traffic quicker.
There's only three driveways.
There are, yeah, there's, I was looking at this, there's a house on the corner and then three, I believe, three houses that have driveways there. Um so those would look like would be. Outside, three houses in the corner property with First and Dayton. Being blocked, yeah, so. Well, what is the point of 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 building this? Is it to increase the capacity of the numbers that you serve? I mean, right now you're doing eighty. Sorry?
Yeah, the first building is no longer usable, but the foundation is crumbling on the.
And that was built as a residence, right? So it's, I've been, small rooms, very difficult to move. Bigger packages and it's not meant for any type of storage, you know. Is the intent to grow the the ministry to serve more people? So that, I mean, instead of doing eighty cars in two hours, that's forty cars an hour, that's one and a half co- minutes per car. To increase capacity such that the line is gonna be even longer going forward?
Economy is what drives the participation of pantry. Not necessarily the goal of pantry to build more, to be able to take care of more people, it's just if there's more people, you wouldn't be able to take care of that. Better building would improve your operation.
Currently, the the pantry has to store food in four different locations. Um and the average age of these women is over seventy years old. And you're asking if if we don't build a decent uh storage area for them to work out of. It's it's unsustainable. Pantry won't continue to operate if the temporary buildings will go away.
Why is this the best location for this?
I'm sure they got a.
Patrons walk there. We're in North Beach. Um the the other locations we looked at, um we would have to go to Skinner Stern Road or something like that. The other, the other issue is the ladies of charity are very tightly interwoven with St. Anthony's. Um and this is St. Anthony's land. Um that they want to continue their association with the parish.
I I would have a comment. I I certainly appreciate the public comments. I really appreciate coming out to speak this evening. Um but with the impact uh being on the east side of Dayton. Um and considering we haven't, I mean, I don't even know how long ladies of charity have been going, certainly ever since I've lived here. Um and if we haven't received complaints from the town, then for me. You know, I would wait to address this issue when there are complaints by those directly affected. And I think balancing out the needs for the town. I I would tend to. Kick this down the road until there was a a a complaint from an affected party. By someone parking in front of the house or having difficulties and we haven't had that. So I would, that's where I think I would fall on that issue.
Yeah, and the cars are moving, they're actually.
They're moving, yes, and I I live around the corner from the cars move very quickly, so if I if I. You know, if something was blocked, it would be remedied fairly quickly and if and and if you do, and and maybe. It may be something worth you thinking about, you know, if you're gonna increase your size, your operation. Economy goes up and down, you may have years or periods where you have increased, um you know, increased flow. And you may need an extra person out there helping. Like I said, it's not, it's, I mean, at least from the street view, it looks like three homes that are there that would be directly affected. Um maybe think about what mitigation efforts might look like at that point.
That's when, that's when the traffic really is.
Yeah.
The police are always informed of of those. Occasionally they come by. They never have anything derogatory to say.
And for me, this is a use issue um. Uh in terms of how the property is used on a day to day basis, um and without. I would just take the view that at at some point, if there are complaints because of increased, you know, patrons. That traffic flow would need to be mitigated at that time and it would be, it would be your responsibility to try and do something. But we haven't received those complaints, so I I. I wouldn't see the need to.
Point out that this application process started after they had applied for to the town and we approved the. The third temporary storage building be- because they just didn't have anywhere in the the current older building.
Yeah.
To to keep food. And so I think the necessity for the building was more for storage and functionality as opposed to uh increasing.
Yeah. It's an extremely unfunctional building right now.
Yeah.
And it's old and so.
So with the new build, are you going to be shut down for that period of time or what? Who's gonna feed, okay, you're already looking into that.
Condition with the contractor, if we want to try and maintain the operation that currently exists, it will be. Challenges to do that, but that is the goal.
Any other, any other comments from the committee or from the?
If you're already notifying the neighbors, uh please keep doing that, especially uh large events. Uh I live in a pretty tight street and whenever we're doing construction on that street, it goes a long way to go up and down. Let the, let people know what's gonna happen. It it helps a lot. Otherwise, it's a good looking package, so.
Um would anyone like to make a motion to approve as presented?
Sure, uh make a motion to approve. The uh category, was it category two?
Yep.
Category two, uh site plan for the uh eighty eight twenty three Dayton app. As as submitted.
Oh, in favor? Uh ninety one thirty two Bay Avenue.
Avenue is online.
Any thoughts on how we'd like to handle this?
If we keep going.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna go to.
So I think we're we're gonna. So I think we're we're gonna keep on the schedule and assuming we're. We're not hitting like the midnight hour, we will try to, uh, we'll try to get you in.
Ninety-one thirty-two Bay Avenue.
Okay, we're. With with this, I'm just gonna bring this up. It's, this is, if it's, if it's a tap house, that's, that's great.
Wait, are we doing that one or ninety-one thirty-one bit?
Ninety-one thirty-two Bay Avenue, unauthorized brewing.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I was getting that, okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, there's the same situation with Greenspring that we had. Being, um, being it was light manufacturing. Right, so if they're gonna be, if it's a micro brewery.
We have those in Article Three that we changed. Limited alcohol production facilities, brew pubs, microbrews, taprooms.
I thought we were still working on that, I didn't know it went through.
So parking. One issue, right?
Yeah, there was a parking plan they submitted that shows the available. Parking.
Of all the different parking areas that exist, yeah.
This is in the the corner.
Where Sweet Sue's. No, not the, not the post office, Sweet Sue's.
That building, when that building was redone. There were parking spots allocated to that building in the triangular parking lot.
Right, that's listed on there as well.
I don't remember how many. Um, I'm thinking maybe six to eight.
I thought it was six, it may have been eight.
Well, it was a long time ago, because that was the first or second term.
I thought those um parking spaces from Ron were, they're they're for the post office.
The post office parking is behind. Is in the, in the town parking lot. Behind the. The market.
That lot. The parking in that lot was for the building where Mexico is. And then when the building that the post office is in was redone.
Right, okay.
Part of the approval was that a certain number of parking spots in that lot be allocated to that building. But this area is not the only part of that building. There are other tenants in that building, so. What I'd like to know, and this is not anything personal directed towards this, but. How many times do we count the same parking spot? That's restaurant row right now. We have Mexico, we have um, cheese, we have cook and dine. Uh, we follow these buildings, so only the same person. We have the wheelhouse on the other street. And looking at the public parking lot. Behind what used to be Chesapeake's Bounty and is now Baker's. That lot. On weekends is called by three or four. And if it's um. A first Friday, forget it. You're not getting in there anywhere. There are people who are using that as a residential lot. Not as a public lot, there are parking vehicles there that. You know, it's like twenty-four hour parking. And I have not seen anything from the town yet to identify that as short-term parking. And we all know that parking is a serious issue. What I'm concerned about is. Adding something else on that corner and tonight we're looking at two different things. In that same area, I'm really concerned that people are not gonna park at Fifth Street and walk down because people are inherently lazy. I'm concerned it's gonna overflow into the residential area on Atlantic. So I'm just testing this out because parking is a huge issue right now. And I'd like to see something. From the owner of the building, saying specifically how many spots.
He just tried to call me. Is he on?
Well, here's the issue, there's no requirement for parking for businesses.
That's what it is, essentially.
Here it says you have to have so many parking spaces.
Mr. Russo, the property owner is on. Mr. Russo? Hello?
We literally can't set cars on top of each other and.
Well, what's, what would be expected load for this? I mean, that's, I don't know what the script footage is over it.
It's not much, it's four hundred and fifty square foot.
We've got Mr. Russo on line, he's on the Zoom call, but his microphone is not working, he can't. Can you hear that hang up from the Zoom call? Yeah, we're getting a feedback from you on the other end, so if you just disconnect from the Zoom call then. Can you hear me now?
The the parking lot. Uh, that is across street from Mexico. Is exclusively for the use of. Two buildings only, that is the Mexico Restaurant. And the um, the post office building and all its tenants. Uh, all our leases with any of the other properties do not provide parking for. For their businesses. So again, the, I can, I, I don't remember how many lot, how many spaces around this particular lot, I think it's probably about sixty or so. Uh, there exclusively for the, the uh, the uh, post office building in Mexico. And we don't seem to have any difficulty, even when there's uh, there's the Baker's been there for four or five years. And I suspect that the traffic will pardon me about the same, uh, when unauthorized brewery gets gets going.
How many of those spots are are dedicated to the post office building?
There, I don't recall there being any specific dedication. In any of the leases, uh, I believe it's just a simple aggregate that is available to. Post office building tenants as well as Mexico. And by and large, the uses are somewhat inconsistent in terms of time. The, obviously, the post office is open during the day. And people, many people just park in front of the building and run in to get their mail. Some do park in the parking lot and walk across the street to get their mail, but they're only there for maybe five or ten minutes. Um, there are other tenants in the building and they may stay a little longer. Uh, the uh, Mexican restaurant, they have a pretty good lunch crowd and then of course they're big, big, big uh. Traffic at times during the weekends and Fridays and the Saturdays. And we really never, never experienced any difficulty in terms of people not having uh sufficient parking. I mean, I'm sure it occurs from time to time.
Really, only on like, like the Fourth of July, um, because I, I know the area well, Fourth of July, um.
There's no question, the first Friday.
First Friday, yeah, yeah.
And even even the parking lot that we have over with the OIG, it holds two hundred spaces, that fills up on the first Fridays. And on the Fourth of July, and on other holidays as well. Has some of the special festivities, special, special functions. So that absorbs an awful lot of the uh, the bigger crowds.
What's gonna, what's gonna be the usage for the library parking lot in the evenings?
Uh, I believe it is going to be made available to the town.
Yeah, how many spots are there?
Thirty-five. And the town is developing the lot behind it as parking now, which will have an additional twenty-four spaces.
A lot on bay?
Correct, right next to Cold Penguin.
Oh, great, I didn't know that, okay.
You already use enough for parking, or at least people.
Yeah, we're having it actually engineered and redone. Uh, Fifth Street should reopen shortly.
Yeah, and that which is additional parking, right, probably fifteen.
Nine o'clock, several nights a week, so.
Justice aside, I talked to the mayor about a month ago, maybe two weeks ago. With regard to uh, the future for the present parking lot over there on Fifth Street, our parking lot, the two hundred spaces. We hope to go before the planning commission, uh, the last meeting and made to present our. Our shops project, which is gonna require uh, parking as well. And but so that will eliminate some of the parking that's there now, probably a third of what we have, a third of the two hundred spaces. And I asked the mayor if the town would be open to our opening a second lot. Over there next to the uh, uh, on on. Chesapeake Avenue, on the corner of Chesapeake and Third Street, we have about, I think it's eighteen thousand square feet. It's now a grass site, which which eventually be developed, but we may ask the mayor if he had any. Objection to our considering providing additional spaces there, should the need arise, once we close down a portion of the existing parking lot on the. On the Fifth Street. And of course, I I don't know what the town's. Uh, progress is in terms of developing its own parking lot. Uh, but that's something that may happen. We also may consider a parking garage when we. Actually developed a hotel behind the, behind the hotel site. Which would accommodate about a hundred and twenty-five spaces, but that's very expensive, so we'll see when the time comes. But in summary, uh, I don't think the parking on this particular lot across from Mexico will be any. More used than it was when there's the Baker's was there for, I guess, four years or so, I don't recall. And whatever businesses were there before then.
How, any idea how many spots are gonna be on the east side of the library? That lot, the open lot there?
Directly behind it? Uh, twenty-three, I believe.
Thirty-five of the library, twenty-three there.
I can pull the site plan up, but.
Fifth Street between uh, Bay, Chesapeake, probably about twenty spots, ten on each side.
We'll lose one of those spots when the town's parking lot there is developed because there'll be an entrance from Bay and. And Fifth. Well, people park at the library. Probably.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
And then the library is probably closed on Sundays.
But the reality is, parking's only a problem when, when you have like those first Fridays, which is down once a month. You have, um, you know, maybe a problem the Fourth of July, Memorial Weekend, I mean, it's not, it's not as. You know, a weekly thing.
Up to this consideration given. This clause here, the use is not changing. The use is remaining the same, five-two oh one. There's the parking requirements, so only after the buildings for which the use is being changed, I don't consider.
Your new use, right? Or new use, I thought it like the.
Yeah, so use being changed. Five dash two oh one. This ordinance shall not be subject to the requirements of this person, as long as the kind extended use is not changed. To me, I consider group pub, bakery, coffee and beer.
But they're gonna be now producing, you're gonna be making the beer there. Don't worry, you're gonna see me a lot there, you're not gonna be a problem, I'm gonna be.
You're making food at the bake.
It's, it's, it's a different, it's, I don't know, when you read up the the definitions. And yes, I know, I'm not the most of the, um, the biggest authority on this, but you read up the definition, it is considered light industry. Whereas restaurants. For some reason or not.
You can refer to Maryland manufacturers. And are you gonna have outdoor seating?
So that lot is. Yeah, that lot will not be available. Because the building encompasses the entirety of the lot.
What I mean, just the, the, the small tables that are there on the corner there now.
They won't be selling food, so the only thing they'll sell is alcohol. And that, that'd be the public sidewalk. For all the other facilities that we have that sell alcohol now, I actually have. The building doesn't encompass the whole lot, so they have uses for their lot where it's. Still inside of the uh.
We have to have some sort of barrier to to block off and that was just, I think, the sidewalk, so we don't really.
Yeah, the building was back, say, ten feet. Then you would, you would be able to put a railing up to the property line, but because the building goes all the way to the property line. There's no available outside spaces.
I mean, for me, in light of, uh, especially in light of five-two oh one. Similar use, uh, granted, it's gonna be different time of day. But the flow I would consider would be the same as what, what the Baker's had. Maybe at a different hour, granted, and with the increase in parking that we're gonna have coming online in the next, you know, six months. I I would be fine with it as presented.
Well, I would also. Think you should put in there, because there are specific conditions. Um, like the offer, offering of outdoor seating. But I think it should be. Because we know it's not available.
Well, that's a, I mean, that's, for me, that's a, like a different, separate matter than than the parking. If it needs to be addressed, then then we can address it. On the, on the parking issue, on the parking issue, I'm o- I'm okay as presented.
The only other requirement I think you should put in there that. If you're going towards an approval, that approval will be based on the date that the apple. Uh, distributor, distributor's license or brewery license that you need to obtain is is sent to the town. Because I don't think you haven't completed that yet, right? So, yeah, so that, I think they're just looking for the preliminary approval so they can finish their licensing. But I think your approval should be based on. How is the uh, W point six food? Requirement being addressed?
About restaurants, um, the booking box took the right away and said. Because we, they they want, they would like to do a similar situation with the deal as, where we have a QR code.
Mexico, you might have a little bit of problem with, because they get so busy, um, that it's hard to work with them, but, um, the, uh.
I believe you said you're way under the seventy-five hundred barrels a year.
Yeah, we planned to do, uh, we could always support up to three hundred barrels in that facility. Um, before we'd have to move offsite and do some rooms and well, that's, that's our max three hundred. So we're very small, very small batch, um, very limited capacity.
Do you have other locations we make to production?
No, uh, this will be our first.
Okay.
We previously were involved with a brewery, so we have experience with a larger brewery.
You were Scorpio, right? Okay, now, um, as a microbrewery, so much of your, your beer has to go offsite. Correct, for the licensing.
Yes, yeah, uh, some of it will get, uh, distributed offsite to, uh, the local restaurants, so that's what we planned to. There, there, it's, it's actually, um, I'm not sure the specifics on that, but yeah, it's if you. Serve up to this much, a certain percentage of it has.
That's, yeah, right.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that and make sure we're compliant. Yeah, the plan is to just work with the restaurants and try to do some exclusive things for them.
That'd be great.
Um, that way we can all kind of work together and collaborate.
No, that'd be a nice collaboration.
Would we need anything like that in writing?
For, oh, for the production or?
The food thing. Anything in writing?
No, we'll do the same thing we did with the previous location at the wheel. Um, once, if it's approved and they get their licensing and they open up. Uh, we'll make sure that there's some sort of a QR code or that people are having the availability to have their food brought in.
One other thing. I know when we were discussing and, and writing of the microbrewery piece, we talked briefly about. And this, this was, we're doing the other place, uh, whether or not there would be. As a result of the actual brewing process, any odors in the neighborhood.
Yeah, uh, the smell of beer on the inside of the facility would probably be, uh, there, but it's, uh, it doesn't produce a. Offensive odors, much like a bakery, it's, uh. It's the smell of, uh, grains, essentially, yeah, grains really is the, it's the primary smell, so.
Well, they're gonna also have to meet all the, um, all the requirements, you know, but the health codes and stuff like that, that are.
I just remember us talking about some kind of a thing to capture some of that.
So we can do, uh, we'll, you know, um, for kettles where we boil the, you know, hort. We like steam condensers where we can capture the, the steam basically into a bucket. Um, so that it doesn't really travel, you know, so it's one of the things we're looking at is a potential way to, uh. But there should be vent, there must be venting there now at the bakery, right, or? Uh, one good thing, we haven't found it, but we're. There isn't.
There's no hood that there.
Yes. That's the one thing we were looking at is. There was the generation there.
Okay.
That way that we can, we can, um, instead of having steam go everywhere, we can capture it into a bucket. Yeah. Basically, all the steam that comes off goes up this, this condensing tube and then, you know, water sprayed on it and it pulls it and drops down.
You can't repurpose that steam for crabs or anything?
That's another license.
Wow, beer steamed crabs, that would be.
That would be amazing. If the beer doesn't work, just do crabs, okay? There is, um, an increase with the, um, with the, with the water, um, with the plumbing and everything like that, that has to happen.
Yeah, we, we, um, it will use quite a bit of water, we've estimated that.
You guys have a timeline for when you think you'll be able to get the approvals for the brew and?
Uh, well, as soon as we get the approval tonight, we'll be submitting our application with the T T B, federal government, and, uh. That can take up to sixty days. Uh, then we'll be, um, also doing Maryland's manufacturers. I think that one goes a little bit quicker, so that might be thirty to sixty days, so. Um, hopefully we can have all that stuff within, you know, sixty days, ninety days at the most, I don't know, but we'll see.
For the summer.
On how fast they move, you know, so.
Yeah.
For the summer, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, um, when people walk into your place, do they be able to see some of the, the machinery in the process?
So you'll be able to see it from the windows as you walk by. Um, and I don't use a lot of stainless steel, so that's cool, I think. Um, and then we're hoping to, in that hallway where you go back to the bathroom, but like a flex, you've got a glass window and then reach to see back. That's where I'm working, doing brewing. Um, and then, um, so, yeah, it'll give people kind of a view of what we do.
Awesome.
Um, so, yeah, I think it'll be, it'll be a pretty cool experience. Nice, um, Rick, you had a couple other concerns about seating and?
I think we've, we, uh, we spoke earlier, this evening has been cleared up, the seating is at twenty.
Yeah.
And that will keep E D U counted its current one.
Okay.
Without having to increase that on the, on the town D D U count.
Okay, so that's good.
You, you got the bathroom, is there a bathroom in that joint? Yes.
Okay. That's shaped, it's like the nicest spot.
The only thing I ask is once you guys get the other processes started, just as those things come in, just send them to me. And, uh, that way I can make sure the file stays updated.
Okay. Um, any other comments or questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the, um. What are we approving? The, the change of use or the usage, conditional use? I'd like.
Uh, bu, bu, business approval.
Business approval.
As presented.
As presented.
Subject to?
You're gonna have on and off license then with that?
Yes, we're gonna have to go, so that's gonna be a good portion of our business, uh, that way we can serve more customers, but they can move in and out, push the, you know, so. Yeah, cans to go and growler bills.
Great.
To kind of limit some of that. You're asking about any additional anguish?
Just, I, I, we, we covered a lot of stuff, I mean, uh, uh, all the different requirements that are in here, we just say that it's subject to the requirements of the seventeen. W, seventeen-three W, or is it not necessary?
Yeah, like I said, I'm just subject to them obtaining W one, all their, their, uh, federal and state licenses.
Okay, so do you wanna, you wanna rephrase your, your motion?
From the motion that we approved their, um. The, um.
Business application.
Business application, um, on the condition that they meet all the, all the requirements and licensings as stated.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go, uh, sincere thanks.
Thank you, Miss Russo.
Yeah, investing your time and money and energy in North Beach, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll work on it. Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck, good luck with all your permits.
Last one.
Well, we, we, we still might have.
Ninety-one thirty-one, they, uh.
Hello, how are you? Good.
This is Patrick, he is opposing, uh, Lisa's Market.
It, it's pronounced Lee, Lisa? Lisa?
Elise Market.
Elise, Elise, okay.
Not else. Her name is, she's the one gave me that vision because, uh, during the, during the COVID, um, when I was at home. Across one of my restaurants and I just had a catering, and the catering was booming, but, uh, most. All my customers said, see, we're home, we cannot do any events. How you can do your pastries and one was brewing all day, all night, so. My young daughter said, Dad, why you stress yourself, why you don't combine everything I want, so that's, or at the end, it came out right.
Question I have on this is, are you going to be preparing or serving food, or is it just gonna be grab and go?
Is, you shopping, you have options to, all depend, you got some, I don't know if you guys went to White Man's or you guys. Put it on, it's radio, so it's actually the upgrade, you can come and get your pastries. And order your coffee, or your cappuccino, latte, whatever. And leave, or you can shop, get it and leave, or you can shop and sit down, it's only six.
Where do the pastries come from?
Uh, from vendors.
From a vendor?
Yes, it's, it's nothing's prepared there.
Okay. So it's staying basically the same use as a retail market.
Yes.
Yes.
Except for the coffee, the coffee area, you'd be serving coffee. And, and people can eat pastries and they can eat it with their coffee.
They can grab and leave, it's up to them, we just have six it, yeah.
You would, because of the heat, because of eating outdoors?
The, the, the ability to eat there and the requirements from the health department and the building code are completely different than. Selling, they notebooks or antique china. The requirements for like the bathrooms, silly's like that are completely.
So that's why we have to talk about parking.
Correct.
To continue, so you can come and do your groceries, or leave, you can get your grocery and get your pastry, or you can. Come and sit down and have your laptop or computer, it's whatever, so it's an option that each individual.
So, but you're serving coffee, does it, the, well, the health department has to come in anyway, because it's, uh, food handling and, and everything like that. Even though you're not cooking anything, you're still handling foods, so, like any, like any restaurant, not any.
We've got Patrick, uh, was set up with, uh, the county's economic development. Uh, and so they are helping him work through the permitting process. Um, there is still health department permitting to do, uh, building inspections that need to be completed. Uh, so basically tonight, I think what you're looking at is a preliminary approval as to. Whether or not the parking proposed would be sufficient, and then any approval of the business would be based on. Um, completing all of the required building permitting and health department inspections.
So you're looking at twelve parking spots, um, I, I'm familiar with that, with the area, I'm trying to think, you're gonna go through the alley? And then, no, how you gonna, like, the grassy area?
Um, one of the contractors is on Seventh Street. You got to build your entrance on with twenty-two feet. And there, and you got two entrance, we're packing with space on each back end, it's ten inch. Make sure that no one get hurt or scratch somebody's cars. You look very well. All those angle.
But it says here that you are going to have inside and outside seating, is that correct?
No, uh, what I, I told everyone is all different, because I don't know, there is no beach. I don't know if we are allowed to do outside or inside, but inside is only six it, so I don't know how the outside work, because most. Of the residents said, it's nice, it would be nice if we got outside, I don't know.
They do have some available space in the front that, uh, stamped concrete is actually part of their property, that's not town property.
So I don't know how to.
Well, the same thing as, as the Baker Sweet Sues, they had some tables out on the, on the sidewalk anyway. So, this would be a similar situation.
Private property, so any, any, uh, any additional seating would still fall under, have to fall under whatever the E D U count would be, so.
Oh, okay.
Um, I believe that lot, that building and the lot next to it where they're proposing the parking. Uh, combines for two E D Us. So they would, they would have the ability for probably twenty seats and then five employees counts for another one, so. They could probably do seating for twenty and still have enough left over for their employees.
So where is parking entrance on Seven?
Yes.
Listen, add a quick side point.
You know, let's, you know, okay, you had the, um, nice and pleasey, then you had letty's place, then you actually had another place that got torn down?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, right, but, yeah, and, and then, and then you have that grass area.
Yeah, that empty lot.
That's where you're gonna go in for parking.
And on the alley would be only for our vendors, because our storage is in the back. Our storage.
Yeah.
Isn't that bad, so.
Okay.
And they can come from the Bay Avenue. And come and park the alley and drop the mission as it go back, so the parking is only for. Uh.
Customers.
Yes.
Okay.
How many of the trucks that the vendors are gonna have? Cause that's not wide out, are they gonna be able to maneuver in?
None, that, that's not a big truck, it's not the, it's not a Cisco truck.
Okay.
Now, is the, um. I don't know, like, um.
Like a van, like a big van.
Uh, if it's, thing like, uh. Object type of front trunk, yes.
Box truck.
Yeah, the box truck.
I was looking for that.
Yeah.
When you see, or, or the type of produce truck, if you see the, but is, it is not a product because we there and we look for.
Um, I, I definitely have also a question. On the paperwork that you put out and advertised, or was it? Um, cause you're telling us a little bit different, what makes us different and special? All our desserts, croissants and ice creams are prepared in-house.
Yeah, that's, that's what I do in DC, but.
Oh, okay, in DC house, okay.
Um, after I have a meeting with, uh, Jessica and Calvert. And it was a misunderstanding, she asked me something to DC, this is that they don't provide it, I changed, I know what, I really headache. I just get everything from vendors, and I keep with DC, DC and the Norridge. And because I have a second location, we open right after Norridge. Uh, I'm going to Salomon, so I'm gonna keep everything. Cause I have a county rules, which in DC rules are different. So, I don't know, because they're not on the same page and that slow my process down, so I decided to just.
Okay, so you're gonna be making it at, at your daughter's house and, and?
No, no.
No.
The DC thing we keep in DC, that's the thing. And everything in Calver County, I mean, in Norridge, and the Salomon will be open right after Norridge, and the D A will be open after Salomon.
Wow.
One open three, Syria in Calver County. Um, I would just get all stretch of vendors, because I want to avoid any misunderstanding and the call and the words. That's pretty much.
Okay. How much, you're gonna have about five employees, you said?
Here, we start with, I, I, I'm proud and praise, but I have myself, I gotta be trained people with. On my team from DC, but they're not employed here, because I don't know how here work. Um, um, so, cause when I started, it was supposed to be ten to fourteen part-time. But I have to talk to my original director, so I said, like, we better, you know, have five full time. We train them and we share the shit, so the next two weeks, it'd be the five full time employee. Does myself and the thing, just on training until they memorize and do everything themselves.
And, and you're gonna be open seven days a week from early to late?
Six AM, yeah.
Six AM, okay. I'm, I'm gonna test you out, I'll be there at six oh one, just to see.
Because I'm off at two thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're gonna be going to Salmo's, to North Peach, to DC, to Salmo's.
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Ambitious.
It, just a quick question, is there in, indoor seating? You'll have some indoor seating or no?
Yes, it's six it. On the indoor.
Oh, just six, oh, like, probably. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, I don't see.
On, on, on letty's side, that's gonna be with a coffee.
Yes.
That's gonna, yes.
Oh, here, okay, I see some outdoor seating, but.
Yeah, no, I, I. No, we didn't mention out there because I don't know the rules.
Yeah.
Uh, is.
So, I'm just asking, that, you're fine, that. The seasonal seating outdoors, does that count against E D Us or not?
If it's on their property.
Okay.
It doesn't, I don't.
The ones that we had on the public sidewalk were public use.
Okay, so they didn't.
Okay, so they didn't get allocated against any.
They did not.
Okay.
So what I mean, I mean, I'm allowed to have it outside that?
No, no, it was, they were asking because there was a business across the street that had some outdoor seating along the sidewalks, but they were. It wasn't exclusive for that business, it was just outdoor public seating. A business that provides seating for their clients on their property is is different, it's calculated differently.
How important is that outdoor seating to your business?
It's not, I mean, that'd be great, but like I said again, every day I learn about the rules here. I was not planning, but all the resident been telling me every day, I'm excited and they really want the outdoor, I saw, okay. I gotta check, we know, I mean, for Timmy, because I don't know how that work, I don't, I know it's my, I know it is my problem. I don't know if I'm allowed or not, so.
You're not gonna have that seating inside, so having some tables on the outsides shouldn't affect.
But does that add any complexity to this approval? The outdoor area heading.
No, that's, that's not enough per view, isn't it? That that would be um under.
His outdoor thing would be on private property. It may incur additional fees for wastewater and stormwater in our EDU count. Um, so businesses are based on two different things. Uh, a retail store is based on the number of employees. But a facility that also serves food to eat is then based on seating.
Right, but he's, he's not, well, yeah, the coffee is, yeah. But what do you, what what would be the number, I mean, I, the idea of being able to sit outside on a nice day. Is is, I think, a big plus for the economic development of North Beach, I think they're beautiful.
People walk with their dog, they don't wanna get in, they all do, they wanna sit, they wanna enjoy, I don't, so that thing, I want to make sure that.
But that's not, that's not a basis for approval or disapproval, that would be.
Right, yeah, okay.
We worked out with the zoning permit.
Maybe that's a sand there.
So can I, so if they ask me tomorrow, can I say, are we after the outdoor? Did in or?
We would have to discuss how much outdoor seating you want, and we we discussed that previously that. A certain number of seats would increase, there would be a cost to that, right?
It's a very big area. You can have a lot, how much does that end your business versus how many?
So EDU is roughly twenty thousand dollars.
One time?
One time.
But that's his own property.
Correct.
Saying, if he wanted to start this approval process without the seating area, he could.
Correct.
Just to get you started.
Listen, appreciate it.
So when when Dale had benches out there and we would sit out there and chit chat?
No consumption of food being completely different.
Okay, okay.
This is, this is based on our wastewater treatment plant and our our stormwater management ordinance. And we're, we're bound by the agreement we have with Chesapeake Beach as to. I mean, that that money, those monies, we don't have an option in, so um. When we get calculated for how many EDUs we use, we have to be able to account for those, and they're not free, so. Uh, the cost for one is about twenty thousand dollars.
Was there one existing before?
There's two there now.
Just in Dale's spot or in the?
In Dale's spot and the grass area, yeah.
So would that accommodate, that would accommodate?
That would accommodate, like I said, one, his five employees would take up one. And then the ability to sell food to eat onsite would be. Every twenty seats is one, so he would have the ability for the five employees plus twenty seats without incurring an additional expense.
Okay, and you're gonna have how many on the inside seating?
Six, it's six, yeah.
Oh, so you're gonna have fourteen.
Yes.
You're gonna have fourteen people outside. Five with one EDU and then.
I mean, if. If we been approved to have sit outside, you will bunch up is three, is three table.
That's twelve.
To fourteen seats, that's all. Oh, you have six inside, fourteen outside, it's twenty.
There's more than. I would go what's around between six or eight people, it's not, it was just people who. You know, who just wanna sit couple of time and leave and people think it was not, it's not the restaurant, just to have some more, you know, few people. Doesn't matter if it's four or six outside, that's our goal, that was not to build. The outside restaurant at the time, you just have. Uh, because I, I see a lot of people, I was there during the Thursday, Friday when it was.
First Fridays.
Beautiful outside, it was Thursday, Friday, it was back there, and people have the dog, they said, oh. We wish you really open, so if you have to sit down, drink a juice and chat and know each other. So that was really helpful and generally, so my goal is to actually reconnect as well, all the resident would just say hi, but. I don't know each other.
How much space do they have, Rick? You said they have the stamped concrete there, is all of that theirs or no?
Yeah.
Oh, that's quite a lot.
Wow, that's a lot of front.
It is, cause the sidewalk.
I didn't realize that, I thought that was.
Yeah, all the stamped concrete is part of that property, it goes all the way to the sidewalk.
But I mean, if you look on each.
Yeah, there's actually space on the Bay Avenue side also, that's.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, he's got, yeah, okay, um, so this is a preliminary? Or what do we?
I I would suggest it be a preliminary based on um whether you. Him completing all of the building inspections, health department inspections. Um, and whether you feel that that is sufficient parking.
I I think it's sufficient, it may not take as many as he's showing, but there'll be adjustments.
Actually, I think it, I think there's probably room for seventeen.
I mean, I, you know, he does have stormwater, you gotta. You know, he, he doesn't wanna make everything.
They have contracted with Jake Havelwood to do the parking lot, they have.
If you look, you have more space, uh, but the reason that we did, because I don't know how many more space, I mean, what was the total of packing? And the first time we start by six, but after this, okay, signal of enough, because during the summer time, you guys would be crazy busy. So we doubled, and so. Sure, things, okay, so can you?
The initial proposal that came in was for five spaces and. My opinion prior to coming here was that was not gonna be sufficient.
You want a few more, but you know where I'm headed, though, you don't wanna push him into a whole elaborate stormwater.
Well, be- because of where it is located, because of the grading, it's gonna be needed to put the blue stone down.
Right.
Um, Jake Havelwood has started the process to apply for a full grading permit.
Okay.
Uh, whatever would be required, um, I believe.
That depend on the square feet?
Depends on the square feet and whether there's any close by, there is one directly across the street, two directly across the street, and a post office.
I'm not sure if he, yeah, I guess we'd have to check the.
If you're, if this is going to be like Trader Joe's.
Better than Trader Joe. I'm said better, I guarantee.
And then I'm gonna come check it out.
Please do, and you will never.
And they never close, they're there all the time, I'm gonna check that out.
Well, Trader Joe's and that concept, they're always busy. Always with lots of people.
Which is good.
It is good.
If you like, are you selling alcohol?
No.
Okay.
I was planning to, like I said again, when I start, the plan was to have the four. For concept on sale every time, but the rule changed, it started giving me so much headache. To be honest, and I decided to remove it, I've just said, no, what, let's just focus on what.
I like what you talked about.
You could ask me too much question, that is because, number one, in DC, among other county, we are live as well, or in Virginia. Wine is not part of liquor.
Yeah.
So, this, and that's because my goal was, because when you come and shop, when you buy all the fresh and healthy thing, you need. Nice bottle of wine to take home, but. When they tried to tell me liquor, I mean, beer, wine is part of of liquor here, I said, what, I don't know.
Yeah.
There's a nice wine store across the street.
It was not really competitive because mine is high-end, I didn't want, it's just, but if you come and get the fresh pasta to my store, okay? Or everything's fresh, it's it's no preserve, I don't sell canned food, we never, that's no way. So when you come and purchase it, you go home, you want a nice bottle of wine, you match what you bought, right? So compared to the cheaper one, so it's not, it's more, to me, it's more about the quality and healthiness. That's why I opened the stores, it's not really. Um, you got seventy, seventy, seventy-six percent of my product, uh, a European product. With maximum six percent of preserve. Any items, that you will never find cookies in package in my store because we make fresh cookies. Our fresh cookies come every day, we never, we don't sell that, I don't sell it, because that don't represent why I am. That's a big difference, that's why I said is an upgrade, a trade job. Yeah, and all, all our product come from France. Italy and Greece. All those uh, uh tomato, tomato sauce, I think, are ready to go fresh with all the flavor there on. Italy with no preserve, you can see really thin, I don't sell dry pasta, it's all fresh. Uh, France, Greece and Italy, you just take twenty second of hot water with your sauce, it's good to go. Never see any dry pasta on the thing, so.
What's the name of your place in DC?
It's called Chef Line, if you go to Chef Line Catering.
What is it? Chef?
Chef Line Catering.
How do you spell this?
Chef.
Chef. Online, online, oh, okay.
There is um, red, green curb.
The entrance is behind that.
Yeah.
Green, all of the uh ten allocated green parking spaces will be preserved. Yeah.
But those people who get upset.
Yeah, no, that is, so if you see all the where the light post is, and then he's got the green area listed. So that, that parking space actually, um, the green area actually ends like where it shows the ten foot mark. It ends right about there.
We have two green, you got one green who ended on my lot, and you got the second green who's for the, for the neighbor.
Is a medical clinic still going forward? Uh, they are, they're waiting on some uh, some other issues with the.
They did the roof.
Yeah, they got the roof done, they're, they're waiting on some other things for the interior.
They still have that lovely picture for the palm reader on the outside.
Um, I'm okay with parking too, I think, I think they've got, yeah, it seems like.
A lot of parking.
I think, I, I, so, and I think there's space there for more if you need to squeeze.
Yes.
That works.
Yeah, like I said, the tw- twelve spaces is is easily um. It could probably do seventeen or eighteen.
Yes.
But with the, the delivery and the loading zone on the other side, it kinda eats up some of that.
Yeah.
The one drawing here that shows where things are in the building. I'm not seeing the, the other little small building where the coffee thing is gonna be.
On the sitting, can you see the sitting area?
This is what I have.
This is sitting, that's the coffee.
So that's the other little building off to the side.
Yes, yes. Is this the small, well, well, this is where the shop is, is where the ceiling and the coffee is here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's why.
Yeah, no, that's.
No, that's inside, because it it's two, it's two building, you got a main building, and you have a small building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, the, the, the six seating, this, next to that is a coffee where the pastry is. Okay. And the main building, that is a groceries.
Okay, great.
So is, is this?
That, that works.
Efficient?
Efficient?
Do we need sufficient? Something a little bit more technical, which is.
I guess it's a preliminary.
So this is a concept.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a preliminary uh to go over usage.
Yeah, parking basics.
Very easy upon concept.
Yeah.
Yeah, I assume they'd have to come back with a cat, with a better site.
So my suggestion was that uh, if you were leaning towards some type of approval, that the, it would be a preliminary approval based on. One, when this site plan comes back, that it's a fully encompassing site plan that shows the parking lot.
Yeah.
The small side building, the upstairs office area, the bathrooms, fully in, on one, one site plan. Uh, the approval of the county grading permit that shows. County approved the grading inside of the critical area um and health department and building inspection approvals.
You're looking for an engineered site plan?
I, I, I don't necessarily need it to be engineered, but I think it needs to be fully encompassed into one document. Which is what I think you were asking for.
Um, yeah, cause I mean. For me, this is, this is concept, and I wanna see what.
But this will allow him to get those other work started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
You don't own the bill, you you're not the buyer, okay.
Yeah, okay, cause you know, I was thinking, you know, you've got all that ADA piece that you have to do, right? Space between aisles and then you had all that kinda dimensional stuff for.
And the gentleman, the contractor they have, Jake Havelwood, he does a lot of parking lots, he does a lot of parking lots for Calver County for the government, so. He's fully aware, he knows the permitting process and the grading permit process. Um, and uh, I think.
Is that, um, is that existing building sprinkled? I don't think it was, or was it?
It is not.
Okay, so he carries through?
Um, that'd be up to, so the county building, we did meet after with the county building inspector, they've started the process for. Uh, inspections on those things, so that would be up to the county.
Okay, alright.
The thing, if you're counting. Wait, the end of this meeting to. Make a plan for me, everything I need to be done to.
Nicole is online now as well, um, I don't know if she has any comments, but she is. She had the EDC for the county and she is in the process of helping walk him step by step to all of the processes. And so this is, this is, you know, it's preliminary, um, the big thing I wanted was the parking. Um, like we just discussed, it's a pretty busy area and and with as. Popular as this has become on social media, this is a possibility, this could open. Uh, the initial five spaces they were proposing, I did not deal with enough. Uh, they changed that to add the twelve and then the loading zone in the back, so I think it's. It's much improved, but I think the preliminary approval should be based on. You know, that grading permit approval, that the twelve spaces are.
Moving forward with this without having permits and approvals at this point, are you planning and desiring to open?
Well, what I'm planning, the area, that's what you found out, because I thought that that would take technically three months, that's my. That was my thought, because uh, based on the basic uh. Of renovations, because when I do think in DC, I think if there's no electrical problem with that, it'll only take three to four months.
The basic renovations were approved through the town, the drywall, the painting.
Of my experience, but I never knew that. Um, you got, you got a lot of thing and I learned from, I returned a negative situation to the positive, so I learned a lot like. He, uh, you know, is, anything you do, add to camera or change your light, you still need permit, I wasn't aware of those thing. You know, I thought that, because we're not wrong. Those expert, they told me. I don't need a permit for those basic things, but if it's something else, but I learned something different, you know, on Tuesday. Uh, I don't. My plan was to open sometime next month, but I don't think that will happen, cuz I don't, based on the list, uh. Nicole said she gave it to me, uh, I'm not sure then.
Is Nicole familiar with the process here?
Yeah, she's.
Yeah.
She's with economic development, and she's right there with the health department, she's right there with all the right people, so she knows her stuff.
She told me that, uh, she would work with me, she'll make a list right after the meeting, uh. She was waiting just to find out what the meeting, how that we end and.
They've been very helpful, they met, uh, the county, so but you, you can be clear with her in terms of what we want, what we need to. Okay, time to call.
Good evening, everyone, Nicole White, uh, economic development, business development specialist here.
Thanks for joining us.
Absolutely, um, I've been a part of this project as, um, Rick has brought me in on it and has, you know. Cut me in the loop on what's going on with the town, the town's requirements, um. I have also been in contact with the health department, inspections and permits, um. And just trying to make sure that, uh, Mr. Kassan is very clear on what the requirements are across the board. Um, and so that he knows how to move forward with the process so that we can get him open sooner than later, cuz we know. Based on the social media posts, um, that. This is needed and it's wanted in the town, so we wanna do everything possible to help him to getting to that.
Well.
What do you need from us, Nicole?
Um, just as Rick stated, you know, this is more of like a preliminary approval, um, for him to proceed. To get the parking taken care of, um, for him to be able to proceed with the county permits, uh. And if, you know, if there's any particular conditions that you want to place on the preliminary approval, just so that they're clear. So that I can make sure that I can include those in the checklist that I'm gonna provide him.
Can you admit, I'm sorry, you had mentioned three things, Rick, right, for, for the next round, basically?
The parking was a minimum of twelve.
Yeah.
Uh, that the parking lot, uh, was. Completed through a grading permit through the county, so it complies with critical area needs. And that, uh, building inspections and health department approvals are obtained.
And a fully developed site plan.
And a fully developed site plan, it shows.
Yeah.
Parking lot, the building, on.
Parking lot, um.
It's, they'll be on two different because the parking lot. Can be attached with, if, if, if we redo it, to redo the full plan, the parking lot would be on a different full plan. We want to give it cuz.
Every single one, and I can show you copies of what, uh, fully encompassed site plan, uh, we can provide them with copies or.
Yeah, the building and the parking, you can see everything over one line.
You guys can have the next.
Because I know you guys are. If I provide all those items, all those things.
This is for next time, so we do preliminary, this allows you to start your permitting processes, do everything, and then. Then when you have a better idea of however everything is fitting together, you can do a, a more well-developed site plan.
The parking lot on the east side, and you can have screening because it affects residential property.
There is a fence there now, I have to measure it, but, um. They have copies of the screen requirements and they have all.
Yeah, I was just gonna hit that.
The defense all along four block properties except for the corner, except for the last, I think. Yeah. It's a privacy fence on the road.
You have to have something to separate the cars.
Yeah.
Except, try and find out where it is, if it's in there somewhere.
It is, it's, it's.
They can do that on the site.
Yeah, yeah. Pick that up on.
Um. I mean, unless there's any questions, would someone like to make a motion to approve with the three, I guess we'd be. Approving, would, would we need to put these in our approval, what we want for next time, or are these, are those kind of given?
Those would be kind of a, this is what you need to bring back next time.
Yeah, we need to put that in this approval, do you think, or is that, are these more standard things that'd be required with, uh, with the site plan, full site plan?
Uh, uh, no, actually, I, I don't think you need to, to do that, I, I know what they are, so I can provide this to Nicole.
Because these, these sound like the normal things that would be in a full site plan, right?
Right, he's gonna be a cat too.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask, cuz it's, if you're gonna.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, just make sure he's fully apprised of what, what's on there, what I'm gonna look, you should push that to his.
Yeah, so the preliminary approval, I don't think you need to outline all those, I can provide all that.
Say, oh, we're gonna say, we're, and when we see it again, we're gonna.
Right, good.
The cat too.
And that'd be easier for me to give to Nicole, that way she knows.
Go right down the list, and what applies, what doesn't.
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Um.
And, and we do want a change of use. Correct? Because it's not, it's not, it's not a retail place anymore, it's gonna be something to deal with food.
Not producing food, no.
They're not producing it, but, um, he is, he's offering coffee.
Seating to eat.
Yeah.
And, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it as a change in use, they're gonna be serving coffee and.
But we need to address that now, do we, preliminary, they still have to, yeah, so.
Just to.
Do you smile?
I'll try to smile while right now, I'm trying to make sure we are, I try to understand, you know. What time it got up at two thirty? Yes, man, because I have catering, I got people, you know. No, it's not really, now it's not really time to go, my truck, because. Everyone is there, I have you guys, I got Calver County, I have, uh, people, so, when we start, I have, uh, the contract, so I got everyone. You know, but right now, we gotta get focused to resolve what I need to do with that, it's a beer. It's not really about working up, it's just make sure that.
Who wants to, uh, who wants to make the motion?
Not single family.
We're almost, we're almost. We're almost there with, for you.
Yeah, would someone like to make a motion?
Well, before we do, I just wanna clarify whether it is a site one or a site two category, uh, it's required, I'm not seeing necessarily versus. Versus two. Someone, have them jump through.
I haven't necessarily, sure.
So right after here, I have to deal with Nicole, or I will get on top of the list, what I have to do next, then I'll make sure. Everything get provided on time.
I think you would be done with us for a little while. So, um, but I think Nicole can guide you in the next steps, you would have to come back to us at a later date. Um, once your building permits are in place, once.
From the county.
From the county, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it would then need to be done from the county before come back here.
That's right, and Rick, Rick will guide you through what needs to be done, yeah. But this will allow you to get the other work started, the county will want to see a preliminary from us.
And tell me detached dwellings.
Uh, uh. So what do you think?
Well, I mean, category one is only for single family detached dwelling, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're under six one oh one development uses, it's.
Yeah.
Doesn't have one that fits entirely for this category, but it, it can't fit in the category one.
Yeah. And it's nothing we have to address tonight, it's more for his knowledge, and I think. I mean, we don't have to address it as part of our approval, do we?
In the worst scenario, I can remove the chair, uh, right now.
No, it's not that, we're trying to figure out what you need to do next time, there's different, there's different types of, of site plans that you need to provide depending on usage, and so we're just trying to. Give you some more information for next time about what you'll need to bring.
Mainly when you.
In the floodplain, you gotta have a floodplain overlay, and you have all of it. Even for what is essentially, in some respects. Same use. Seems excessive.
Not as much as it sounds like.
Hey.
Like the floodplain stuff and critical area stuff is. Yeah, it's pretty.
The next, like, a month from. Everything.
Yes.
Um.
We don't have any options.
Impervious.
Oh.
There's, one of the people waiting for me, where.
Yeah, yeah. Rick can speak to this better than I can, but you would need a category site plan and a business license for North Beach. Yeah.
We have that, we have the application for that, um, I think this.
I think he's, he's trying to send the bigger process a little bit better.
And Nicole is gonna guide him.
Yeah.
My question was, um, after mostly, I have to do everything, the Calvo. County will ask me to do, and bring everything to you guys the next time. After the next time, get the final approval, how long we take then to open the door.
Once, once you get, you come back and you bring all the things that they say they need to see. The night that you get approved here, you're done with us, you, and the county says you can go, you can, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, if I do everything and get approval from Calver County and just waiting for you guys.
The, the day after you get approved here, you have all the other approvals from Calver County?
Okay.
And the night that you bring that in here and have your meeting, that, you're done, you can open the next morning.
That's what I'm trying.
Do you have an engineer?
Uh, uh, for this, science either for the.
Site development plan that we're requesting.
For the parking or for inside?
The site, the site development.
Be the overall site, it'll be the building, um, you know, done to scale. And it's property lines, parking, you know, like one picture that'll show kind of the whole.
I will get someone tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's not, I will do everything I can to make thing up, done, yes, if.
And like I said, I'll provide some.
Yeah, and Rick can give you some guidance, and it's written down, specific about what you'll need.
Nicole, Nicole and I discussed it earlier.
Yeah.
Uh, without the site plan and what was gonna be needed, so.
Okay, and there's specialists that can do that for you, can do all the drawing and do the site plan, so. Okay. Um, so it looks like we can just approve this as presented, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um. Approve the, um. Prove the plan as presented, based on the. What is it, don't need, we need the, the concept. For the concept plan for the night, and that, um, we're gonna need a fully developed site plan. What else, do you want the other two things, the, um?
I don't think we need those, those, those are, those are part of a, of a, of a comprehensive site plan, so.
So that would be, that covers the change of use.
Yep, we'll, yeah, we'll take care of all that, that's, uh, when he, when everything comes back, that'll all be addressed.
So we've got a motion to, to approve the preliminary site plan as presented.
Second.
Concept.
Preliminary concept plan, yes. I'm fading too.
You're gonna get that, you're gonna get that, okay.
Um. We've got a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Good to go.
The next meeting is April, uh, twenty eighth.
Uh, it'd be the. Third Thursday, right?
Fourth, fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday, I mean, it's, it's, fourth Thursday.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For choosing North Beach to invest your time, money, and.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Is he still on?
He could be, yeah.
Hmm, yes. Okay.
Coffee on the way, that's, yeah.
Hello?
Hello there.
Yes, hello, good evening.
Good evening, I'm, this is Gil, I'm sorry, I was just listening. And had my phone on mute, I wasn't sure that if the committee called my name, so.
Uh, we had had you on the schedule earlier this evening, uh.
This is Gil, this is.
Oh. Yeah, I'm the, the actual owner.
For test now.
No, he's the property owner for.
Well, he's.
Oh.
He was online listening.
Oh, okay. And also, and thank you so much for, we're, just like Rick said, working on the, uh. Certain preliminary stuff for the urgent care, so that is in the plan, although I know you like the site. Sign and the building.
Lovely, yeah.
Yes, don't, but that, that's going to change, I just, I just wasn't sure if my name was called and.
No, no, I think, I think we were able to get through everything, um, yeah.
Thank you so much, thank you for your time, I know it's.
Wonderful, thank you for being available, it's appreciated.
Thank you, committee members, appreciate your time.
Alright, good night.
Good night.
You know, and there, um, for, for the emergency care, that building is gonna be coming down, that's right next to it, east of, of that, so. That's gonna be for parking as well.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. I think it'd be a cute house, so, but yeah.
Anybody here for Chestnut?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
Spared off, the original question was, what's the use of this boat, is this gonna be a vacation rental?
Uh, no, it's just our home, and our, our contractor's on the line too, but, um, no, it's just our home.
So what are we looking at?
So new parking issues be addressed. Nope, even though they're going from one bedroom to four bedrooms. Okay.
Not a new build.
Alright, so on the site plan, the first page. Critical area site plan. Going in the front building restriction line of three feet, should be ten, which you're in compliance with for your proposed addition. However, there's an area in there that's lined, it's not identified, I wonder if you could tell me what that is?
In yellow.
It's. It sits over top of the existing sidewalk.
Yeah, our contractor, Jeff, he's having a hard time, looks like, with his volume, so let's see, he can probably answer that better, but he's having a tough time. Can you hear me? I can hear you, Jeff, yeah. Alright, hang on a second here.
Did you hear the question?
Uh, could you repeat it, I'm trying to find the, I'm trying to look at the plan here, hang on a second.
So your first page, your critical area, uh, area site plan?
Yes.
In the front, on Chestnut Avenue. In front of the proposed addition. There is an unidentified box. That shows a three-foot building restriction line, I'm just wondering what that box is.
Dotted line or.
No, it's just this, this black line.
Hold on a second, I'm gonna have to, hang on a second, guys, one second, please.
Mm-hmm.
Any one just. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the full set of plans, it's hard for me to see the line on this one. The address of this property.
Chestnut and new, um, forty-one twelve. I, it could be just nothing, I don't know, but that's the addition, or I'm okay with that, it's this thinner.
Setback, I'm assuming.
Just wanna make sure there's nothing, because that's a ten-foot building restriction, not a three-foot building restriction, which they're fine with the addition. If nothing else is going in front of it. So.
I don't believe, I, I don't think that is anything, actually, there's nothing, um, structural wise on the front.
Yeah, there's nothing on any of the elevations or anything else, I'm assuming there's nothing there, but you're showing. A line and a three-foot building restriction line.
I think that's what it is, they've extended that three-foot building, yeah, it goes back here, they extended that around the whole property. Instead of just the sides. See, then it could stack up, yeah, it's dotted there too, so it's that same.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm looking right at, I, I don't think that, I don't really know what that is, to be honest with you, I don't know why he drew it like that, but it's. Not anything that is structurally related.
It shows the building restriction line, it's just incorrect.
Okay.
Would it be, needs to be corrected.
So, yeah, so that needs to be ten feet.
You are all need to do.
Exactly.
Now, a bigger issue is gonna be you're over the height.
Um, I'm actually not, I took care of that with Rick, um, last week.
Okay, what'd you come up with?
Uh, we.
Thanks, yeah.
We, we just lowered the, the pitch, it shows a ten twelve, we just lowered that down, um, it, that's just a generic number that the, the architect drew. I think just to give it a little bit of. You know, just to give it some elevation, um, but I. Uh, brought this to Rick's attention, came over to the office there and lowered that down to a, I believe a six twelve, I gave the information to Rick and. I also lowered the, the top floor from nine foot to eight foot, which gives us about three foot lower than the actual forty foot restriction.
And are you measuring from grade or from the top of the foundation?
Uh, I believe that's from the top of the foundation, I believe.
It needs to be from grade.
Well, we're still way under, I, I'm, no, I'm sorry, we are going from grade, I apologize, we're, we're going from grade. Because I lowered, I lowered it almost, uh, four and a half feet. Could be about a foot and a half lower.
You were at forty-four, six. You should be more than forty, more than a foot and a half lower to get under forty.
No, we're gonna be lower by, lower than forty by a foot, at least a foot. And no, I'm saying lower than forty by over a foot. Just lowering the pitch drops me almost three feet. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be just under by about a foot or so.
You don't have a new first floor plan, is that, you, you have an existing first floor plan? Are you changing anything on the first floor?
No, it's staying just like.
And it should, it's beautiful.
Yeah, it's, it's really nice, it's pretty nice.
Other than the addition.
I'm sorry?
The first floor is gonna change by adding the front addition, right?
Well, there is no front addition, it's, we're going straight over top of what is there.
Only on the second floor?
No, no, it's all stacked over top of each other, just like you see it, there's no, there's nothing above, you know what I mean, there's. There's nothing being added, other than the two floors above, it all goes straight up.
The foundation, um, well, they're gonna be adding.
Well, there's actually a foundation there now.
Okay. Well, that's the stair, I mean, that's the.
May resolve that.
They don't have easy views when they multiply the number of running pictures. Probably has commercials, you know, that's, you saw much different. Really, that's it? That's six thousand a month.
At, at North Beach rates.
So how far down the existing, uh, so you got your footer, it, it stubs up, how tall is that?
Uh, not very tall, it's, um, probably about a foot and a half maybe, give or take.
And that's a, that's a, uh. It's a perimeter strip footing, right?
Yeah, it's a cinder block, uh, wall.
Isn't. Is it solid or are you gonna fill it?
Um, well, I had, we can't get under the, we can't get under the building, so once I dig in, I'm gonna have to, um, you know. I don't know, I have to take a look at that, I mean, you don't actually have to saw, you don't, I, I've never heard of a code that said you had to pour a block wall solid, so if it's. If it's, um, if it's hollow, that's not uncommon, I mean, that's typically how they.
No, I know, but you're gonna stack two more floors on it, that's why I'm asking, right?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna have to have a structural engineer obviously come and take a look, but I mean, I, it looks like. I know when Brandon and his wife purchased the property, somebody had renovated it. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but it was, that's definitely not the, uh, what's inside is definitely not what was there originally. And they, they did a pretty nice job actually, but it looks like there was, um, quite a bit of foundation work done. Because the block is new. So it's, a lot of it's new, so someone has, uh, done some work on the block.
So you're gonna. So you haven't verified the size of that stuff yet?
Of what?
The, the, uh, the footers?
Uh, not yet, no, I normally call my structural guys in, once we get closer and then we'll, you know, if we have to amend something, we can and, uh, you know, go from there, typically, we don't. Uh, spend any energy on that until we know we're permitting.
Alright, so, do you have your drawings out?
I do, yep.
Alright, so I'm looking at A eleven, and I'm looking at your cross section, B tack B.
Let's have some new details. As I said, mine only goes at the project, went up to A nine. So there's a new draw.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, uh, where are you at now? I'm on A eleven.
Yeah, so you got blocked from top of footing going three foot, four inches?
Well, here's the thing, I, you know. My architectural or draftman, however you wanna say it, um, I don't know. I think that's just a typical number he used, um, because, oh, if you go to the back of the house, we, we definitely, we don't have three foot there. Uh, we're almost on grade back there, you know, with, with the block wall itself. Um, there's a, there's a deck there and there's very little elevation change on the back, so we don't have three foot. Um, so, I wouldn't go, that might not be a hundred percent accurate, maybe on the. If you're looking at the front of the house, maybe on the left side, it'd be possible to get closer to that three foot, but I don't believe it's that tall.
You think it would have to be four, three, done? Hmm, okay, so. Then I'm looking at your, your new inside footers, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, walk me through that, what, so, you're gonna, you're gonna demo out and then, and then, uh. Dig those out and set them?
Yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do that from the top, that's correct, we'll just penetrate through the floor and then we'll, you know, dig our footers, pour them. Um, and then we'll work out from there, that's correct.
That's it, and the lot is twenty-five by hundred? Okay.
So, the depth of this. It's nineteen hundred square feet total.
The one to the east of that house.
It's the same nineteen hundred.
It's gonna be. That's the ball. What are we actually looking here? What, 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 what's the application for?
It's an addition, he's straight up permit here, category one, because it's residential build up, I'm just asking.
And Rick, how does, how does this, I, I think we're asking these questions, the existing foundation, I think there's some questions about whether that can really support. Uh, three story building, and so how does that work if they get into this and they say, well, actually. These, these two new.
So the county gets into the permitting process and comes out and says. Uh, you know, your, your foundation and, and, uh, mechanical or the, uh, architectures that you send in to build on. They come out and determine that that foundation isn't sufficient or the. The interior pylons that they're gonna pin are not sufficient. And they won't get the building permit from the county.
Yeah, and they'd have to come back to us and.
Similar to, uh, you remember the large little building on the corner of the boardwalk?
Yeah, that's right.
They initially had proposed to build on top of the foundation. Well, then they, no, they poured the building down and there wasn't one. There was no foundation, it was six cinder blocks, that was it.
Where they broke the building when they tried to raise it, so.
Okay, so, alright, so we got that clarified, so you've got some new footers out on the property line, can you? And it's, I think it's mostly for your decking?
Yeah, that's correct.
Alright, you need to redesign those, so you're not on the property lines?
Okay, so you're saying redesign the decks?
No, redesign the footer. You're right next to adjacent properties and you got that big spread footer, which is good, because the ground's not gorgeous or anything, so. But, uh, we're not gonna, at least at a, at this level, not gonna say that you can go ahead and put that, the edge of footer on the property line.
Okay.
Structures are structures, whether they're, you know, a little bit under the ground or that you, we can all see them, but. And especially since you're holding up decks, you're not main structure, you should be able to reconfigure those.
Okay, Mike, when you say reconfigure, just so I'm aware, I'm, I'm making notes here, you're thinking, um, maybe. A little more narrow your thing, or maybe turn them, I mean, typically a footer's a footer, but, uh, let me look here.
Cause like, if I'm the person on the property next to you and I catch you coming out. And digging that for that footer on that front end, you're done, okay?
On the front of the property?
Gonna be digging it right on the property line. So you gotta pull that in, and again, it's just the decks, this isn't your main stuff, right?
Right, right. Okay, so, yep, so pull the, so maybe I pull the decks in, you're talking from the side to side fronts, correct?
They're still three foot off the property line. No, his, his footer doesn't show that. His footer eats out into it, that's the, that's my beef. Yeah, and it's just the ones for the decks, right? The front and back? These guys. Yeah, but this is, still ten foot off property.
Just wanna make sure the base of that footer doesn't encroach.
Yeah, sideways, I'm talking about.
You're talking about right and left, correct, on, on the left and right side of the home?
East and west, yes, so he has to reconfigure those footers.
To bring them in a bit.
Or can't leave your deck. Or run them different, I mean, the, the footers, you know, he, he's gotta get X amount of bearing, he can do something on that.
Do them front to back.
Yeah, we can do that, I, I'll talk to my structural engineer about that, no problem.
Yeah, I mean, I just, we, I'm just not gonna prove you, you know, putting it theoretically right on the line here like that, so.
Yeah, no prob, no problem, we can, I, I'll work on it with the client and I'll, I'll talk to my structural guy, um. We can get that changed pretty quickly and then, um, it won't take but a day or so to get that redrawn.
Okay.
Ends right now is not gonna change.
That's correct, that, that's not gonna change.
Why are they coming out five feet?
What do you mean coming out five feet?
Aren't you putting a five foot addition towards Chestnut Avenue?
No, there, that, that's a, that, that's part of the home now. It's just going, what you're seeing is that we're going over top of the porch, it looks like, I don't, it, it just kinda looks like an addition, but it's not. There, that's the structure there now, that you, it just has a small roof, we're gonna go over that as well.
That little roof area.
Yeah, there's like a little, I don't know, it's not much of a roof, but it's probably at five foot, we're just gonna. Go over that and bring that building out to where it already is now on the lower level.
I'm, I'm still confused, is it, is it like cantilevered, the second level cantilevered beyond the, the, the front of the first level?
No, no, if you look at the plan, go to A two. Right elevation. And you see, if you look at that front corner there, you'll see that, I'm gonna just call it, it looks like kind of an, an L shape. Outline there, there's a large window on that first floor, that, that's actually there, that, that section is there on the lower level.
It's still encompassed by the roof.
Yeah, there's a roof, there's just a single story roof on that section right there that's lower than the rest of the main roof, we're just gonna go over all of that. It just looks like an addition, but it's actually not, it's actually, that is part of the home. That's existing, I should say, that's existing.
We're gonna go over that, that's, that's our five foot thing. But here on the east side, they are bringing that wall out.
To the corner.
Yes.
Balconies are extending further out.
Yeah.
No, but you're still extending front, further into the front.
Yeah. I feel it is, I thought it was just the E, like, versus the U. It's coming out the ears, I. And I'm guessing it's.
We're building up the E coming over. When you build it up, the second, third, third floor, you'll have like a.
I know you can come do bump outs.
Kinda forking over it, so.
Yeah. We're still a little confused if this is an addition or not, cause the deck, the deck is coming out, it's a, a supported deck that's coming beyond the existing.
Yeah, but you need a variance on that front yard setback?
No, it's ten foot. Ten foot over in that, in that zone.
But with design standards, he should be equal to whatever's next to him.
For residential, it's not standard.
Discretion, and I like to use my discretion. Because you create a real.
It is, it's within within a foot, put in the half, two feet of the other front foot houses on the street. That's what it looks like.
Yeah, they're on alignment there.
And they're very close.
If you will, face the structure, so.
Yeah.
What's that?
You've got, you've got all those.
They're filling it from the existing, we gotta have the picture. This is basically what's going on there, this gets in filled and this becomes decks.
Alright, let's carry in the, as if. I got you, I got you.
Hey.
So how far from, from that?
So from here to the property line is ten feet.
Okay.
And that's only, that's only ten foot setback there, is that because of the zoning or is that be? Yeah.
Yep.
You don't have a lot of property to be, to work with.
Yeah, you can see from here that it's, they're all almost, except for the new real estate office.
So we're good.
We're good.
I mean, we're.
Except that, that, that funky line right there on the, yeah, that one, here. This one, that's, this line right there.
Yep.
Is that? That would be the balconies, huh?
Yes. Yep.
So that's.
And that's ten feet from the property line, and that's above where you would measure from anyway.
That's what I measured office.
Because.
The first floor.
I can't remember what that's. These, uh, so here's the main part of the building, this is five feet.
W one.
Jeff.
Yes.
There's a small circular step that leads into the front of the house.
Yes.
Is that going to be covered or is that going to stay there?
No, that, that would be, it would stay there, that, that would be actually where you walk in still.
Yeah, see, this is first floor, so we don't get to five foot until we get to the second floor, and even so, you don't measure, you measure from there to the property line, not there, up there. So we're actually fifteen feet from the front property line.
I think it's essentially there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
This is W one, right?
Yep. Yeah, so you had adjustments on this set of plans for the building height, correct?
Couldn't get, yeah, so we need, just need to get the digital ones with all of them on there correctly, it didn't come over correctly, so he brought those in sample.
Yeah, cause, cause I ran the string earlier and I was like, wait a minute, he's over, okay, I see you made the adjustments on there.
Yeah, the roof pitch is changing and then.
Yeah, guys, I just wanna say, I did everything I could with my engineers to try to get them to change these things before the meeting, but they're so far behind it, they're, you know how it is, I mean, it, that's why I did him, went over them with Rick and I'll get those changed, they're working on them now, so it, it may be a day, so maybe a week, I don't know.
Like you said on the.
But, yeah, I seen that one. Oh, so that's great right there, that, that immense crawl space is gonna be like under.
Now they gotta put a stairwell up there.
It's kinda green.
Parking lots there, and, um, in that John Scott's new, no, what, Chestnut? Is. Is that, is that where the new real estate was, when it, yeah. When, when did they have that blocked off? To, um, Chestnut, um, to, uh, Chestnut.
You know what I mean, like?
What is the what? That they could block that off?
Down there.
This time is that? To put them outside, feeding?
I think it, I think it was more for those where the deck splits, bringing, hopefully increase the traffic.
Okay. One time, one in there and some chews.
What are you looking at now, Drew?
Alright, so once he gets started, okay, because he's building on top of, okay, so theoretically, it doesn't mean an estimation permit or a big site. Site plan, right, so if it all goes to crap and he's gonna drop the building, then that'll have to come back for. Starts again, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Just like the, the blue one did, they had to come back.
Right, I don't remember that, that's, yep, okay. Well.
So he's got two things, he's gotta change the footings for the deck off property line and revise the building restriction on it to show ten feet.
Yeah, if this stuff, they decide so that it's correct.
Yeah. Yeah. And there, there's no restriction on, from the county for, uh, like footprint versus, you know, percentage versus lot size or impervious?
So because they're not, they're going over top of the same one, it's not, it doesn't.
Doesn't.
You just already got decks.
Aren't decks considered impervious? There is increasing that.
So they're actually, actually probably less.
They're taking some deck.
Yeah, cause, uh, actually, it's a hundred percent. Oh, the big deck in the back.
Right. It's grounded back, so.
Yeah, okay.
So I wanna make a motion? Uh, you, 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 you guys have to do it, I have no clue where you're at at this moment.
A week at least finishes.
Take a motion to approve forty-one, twelve Chestnut application, subject to revising the front building restriction line to ten foot and moving the side pier foundations off the property line. Uh, and the, we get electronic copy of the adjusted building height to be under forty feet.
I'll second.
Go on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Well, and everything else will be short. And we.
It's gonna stick up like a pencil.
It is, gonna be just like that one on six street, so.
Well, the one to the, um, west of it is a two-story.
There's a two-story, you've got the, you've got the.
Real estate is like.
Real estate.
A monster.
Yeah, it's only one house.
Of original cottages right now. And they're all low, and you've got Tasty Freeze on the one end, and then we've got a couple two stories and then single, and then the monstrosity on the corner. So, you know, this is gonna be a zigzag.
One, two, three, four. I think the zigzag's gonna go away fairly quick, I believe the property on to the right is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that still the same?
I don't like making my decisions on.
No, no, I understand. No, I get it.
I'm looking at it right now and.
I agree, but by right, they have forty feet.
Alright, can we vote?
You did though.
We voted.
Okay, we voted, yeah.
Thank you everybody up there.
Yep, thank you for hanging around and, um, congratulations.
I'll get a hold of you sometime next week, Jeff.
Yeah, that sounds good, I'll get you everything you need, I really appreciate your time, guys, thank you very much.
Hey, thanks for answering all the questions, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you guys working with us.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Alrighty then.
Someone like to make a motion to close this meeting?
I'll make the motion. Yeah. Now, Rick, what's this, you give him notes on how to do the motions.
You thought he was studying up.
So the.